Thank you. We're back from executive session at ten forty P M where we discussed personnel, school safety and security and possible litigation. Need a motion to accept the resignation of Mrs. Carly Wise, school psychologist with regret, effective no more than sixty days from the date of resignation and authorize the administration to post and advertise if necessary for the position. So move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Need a motion to accept the resignation of Mrs. Emily, Ms. Emily Buka, elementary computer teacher with regret, effective July eleventh, two thousand and twenty-four, and authorize the administration to post and advertise if necessary for the position. So move. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Need a motion to accept the resignation of Ms. Kirsten Le- Laker.
Yes.
Um, special education teacher with regret, effective no more than sixty days from the date of resignation, and authorize the administration to post and advertise if necessary for the position. So move. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. I need a mo- uh, motion, um, to approve, thank you, to make a reduction in the number of paraeducators by asking for volunteers for further lower retirement. So move. Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
I'm Mr. Vanata. Abstained?
Oh, roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry, because I didn't ask her. Before we do that, is there discussion or question? Okay, roll call, please.
Ms. Frye?
Yes.
Mr. Kern?
Yes.
Mr. Leisure?
No.
Ms. Blackheart?
Yes.
Ms. Warren?
Yes.
Ms. Single?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Vanata?
No.
Ms. Jack?
Yes. Motion carries.
I need a motion to hire Mrs. Gina Willie-S- Williamson, excuse me, as school nurse, um, subject at bachelor step one, subject to assignment, and per the terms and conditions of the current McGuffey Education Association agreement and pending receipt of all clearances, Act one sixty-eight verifications and medical exams. So, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries.
Uh, per my, um, Ms. Williamson was not able to join us this evening. She is, however, a W V U graduate with a bachelor's of science in nursing. Uh, she has actually been in our district, she's familiar with McGuffey, uh, actually serving as a substitute since twenty sixteen, is very familiar with our students in all of our buildings. Um, and Debbie Butterfield will be her mentor. Uh, she has over twelve years of experience within nursing. Thank you.
Welcome. Need a motion to hire Amanda Pratt, a school social worker at master step one, per the terms and conditions of the current McGuffey Education Association agreement, and pending receipt of all required clearances, Act one sixty-eight verifications and all medical exams. So move. All those in favor say aye.
Discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Yeah, I'd just like to share the pleasure to work with Ms. Pratt this past school year. Um, and she's excellent, and we are very lucky to have her here at McGuffey.
Great. Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? I think that was somebody in the... No, I think it was somebody in the audience. Okay, once again, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries.
Amanda was not he- able to be with us tonight, she's actually on vacation as of this morning. Amanda comes to us with a bachelor's of social work from Cal U, as well as a masters of social work from California University, as Mr. Vanata said. Uh, this last year, she was a family behavior resource indivi- uh, with the Quaker Valley School Trip. Before that, she's been an independent living co- uh, caseworker, and has had work in mental health, drug and alcohol therapists. Thank you.
Need a motion to hire Julie Cunningham as an A L A teacher at master step six, subject to assignment, and per the terms and conditions of the current McGuffey Education Association agreement and pending receipt of all required clearances, medical exams, Act one sixty-eight verifications. So move. Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? I'm abstaining, simply because I worked with her, have a prior working condition with her. Um, I will say she's an exemplary teacher and more than qualified, but just to avoid any appearance of impropriety, aye, abstained.
He's gonna tell us about her.
Motion carries, I'm sorry.
Is that what you were waiting for?
Yeah, yeah.
Motion carries.
Uh, so, Ms. Cunningham, uh, Ms. Cunningham, she was here with Hudson Eric, uh, they have small jobs, we left. Um, so, Ms. Cunningham, uh, she has fifteen years of, uh, teaching experience at Central Christian Academy, Bethel Church Pre School, she was in the McGuffey School District, and she graduated from Temple School District. Uh, her education comes from California University... Sorry. California University of Pennsylvania and University of Pitt Johnstown. Um, we had over forty applicants for the job, uh, got it down to eight, four, and then the final two. Uh, so we're excited to welcome Ms. Cunningham to the middle school, uh, and, uh, excited for her to be here.
Need a motion to hire Jennifer Burdine as principal of a salary of seventy-seven thousand nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars, subject to assignment and per the terms and conditions of the McGuffey School District Compensation Plan for school administrators and supervisors, and pending receipt of all required clearances, Act one sixty-eight verifications and medical exams. So move. Second. Oh, sorry. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries.
I have the pleasure of introducing Ms. Jennifer Burdine. Uh, she is a Temple graduate out there in Philadelphia, a B S in education, and she graduated from Temple with a summa cum laude. Uh, she then received her master's in education administration from Cal U. She's been a middle school principal up until this year in Bel Air, Ohio. Uh, prior to that, she's had experiences in West Virginia, and she has worked with elementary students, um, as a... I don't know if this means that you were a librarian, I never actually asked you, but... Library media specialist, um, and currently resides, uh, in Washington. Uh, we all think, uh, very highly of this chick for Claysville, we're very excited, we think she's a rock star, she cares about kids, detail-oriented, oriented, um, and, uh, I think a lot was said about this idea that she will be a fit, uh, for the community, which we definitely thought about with our Black Claysville. So with that, I want to again congratulate and welcome up Jennifer.
I'm a little shorter, so I need to... Uh, good evening, Dr. Oberg, President Jackson, Vice President Leapart, members of the Board of Education, and esteemed colleagues and guests. Thank you so much for the opportunity to serve McGuffey School District as the principal of Claysville Elementary School. I began my career in education as a media and technology integration specialist in West Virginia for nine years for students in grades TK all the way up to eighth grade. And over the past year, three years, I have served as the principal, like Dr. Oberg said, of Bel Air Middle School in Belmont County, Ohio. And although I've really loved the time that I've spent in Ohio, I'm from Washington, PA, and I am very, very excited to be home. So I look forward to working under the direction of Dr. Oberg and the school board, uh, and to make, uh, Claysville Elementary a great place to go to school and continue that. So thank you so much for the opportunities for your district.
Thank you. I need a motion to approve the additional drivers for D G and C for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, and twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year, pending receipt of all required clearances as presented. So move. Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Need a motion to hire the following list of twenty twenty-four fall sports assistant coaches, per the terms and conditions of the agreement between McGuffey Board of Directors and McGuffey Education Association, pending receipt of all required clearances and Act one sixty-eight verifications. In the event of a partial season, salaries will be prorated. The one that I have to say, uh, submitted and amended. Thank you. So move. Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
I abstain.
Motion carries. I need a motion to... I make a motion, or I need a motion to hire the following site coordinators for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year, pending receipt of all required clearances as submitted and amended. So move. Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve a memorandum of understanding of C C L Technologies to provide student help desk and technicians starting July first, twenty twenty-four, and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven as presented. So move. Second. Any discussions?
Is this, uh, still by staff? No, 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 this is not by staff, this is actually our student, uh, technology individuals that come Tuesdays and Friday. Uh, they, uh, it's our help desk, it's actually help desk, it's not just for students, it's actually for staff. They man it five days a week, but in this case, they're actually on site for two days. Oh. I wasn't going into it, because actually, uh, what we got in this agreement, actually, um, the cost for this position actually has gone down from the previous year by two hundred dollars a month. So for the next, uh, two years, we'll see that happen, and then in the third year of the contract, it goes back to actually the levels we are right now. So we're giving this person, uh, actually reduced costs over previous years.
Any other discussions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Need a motion to approve memorandum of understanding between McGuffey School District and Computer Center Line Technologies for a three-year contract for technology services to begin July first, twenty twenty-four, and expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven, at a monthly fee of ten thousand one hundred and fifty dollars for this next year, ten thousand three hundred and fifty dollars for the following year, and ten thousand five hundred and fifty dollars for the third year as submitted. So move. Um, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Need a motion to approve the P S D A Health and Welfare Fund Vision Renewal Agreement for Administration of Professional Personnel, effective September first, twenty twenty-four through August thirty-first, twenty twenty-six, at the cost of six dollars and sixty-eight cents per employee per month, representing no increase over the current rate. So move. Second. Any discussions?
I have a question, um, is, is there not a cost to the district for this? I, I, that was my only question, was what is the cost to the district?
Six sixty-eight per employee per month.
Per employee, but are we, is there anything additional that's being paid? I guess I'm confused, I'm sorry. Vision coverage.
We pay six dollars and sixty-eight cents per employee for basic vision coverage.
That's, I didn't know if it was the employee paying that, or if it's the district.
Yeah, we pay it. There are buy-ups available, and then...
Yes.
The employee pays the buy-up difference.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't understand what you were asking. Well, it came out, and I'm like, I don't think I said that the right way, and then I confused myself, so I apologize. But that, that was... Good night, guys. Thank you.
Any other discussions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Need a motion to approve the three-year portrait and agreement, yearbook agreement for McGuffey Middle School with Life Touch National School Studies Incorporated for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year through the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year as presented. So move. Any discussions?
Did, did, go ahead. I just wondered, because I was looking at the high school portrait agreement, and there's Shutterfly Life Touch, but then the middle school portrait is Life Touch National, are they two different?
They are two different.
Okay.
I, I, I wish I could tell you, uh, as I sit here, why we have two different Life Touches.
Yes.
There's no cost to the district, these are, uh, folks who come in, in case of this Life Touch studios, they also, in addition to that, uh, provide planners for the, for the middle school.
Okay.
Um, I, I do not, I have not looked into why we'd have two separate Life Touches.
Okay. Thank you. And neither one of them have a cost to the district?
No.
Because one of them says there's no, no cost, and then one of them doesn't, so I wanted to clarify.
Correct, that's correct.
Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Need a motion to approve the annual renewal license agreement between McGuffey School District and Orbit Software Incorporated at a cost of thirty-five hundred dollars from July first, twenty twenty-four to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. So move. Any discussions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Need a motion to approve the three-year agreement with Shutterfly Life Touch L L P to provide yearly photos for McGuffey High School students and staff. So move. Second. Any discussion? All those in... I'm sorry, is somebody...
I'm just sorry, I'm just...
Oh. Any discussion from the board? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Need a motion to accept the McGuffey School District audit of the financial statements for the year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, as presented by Hoseback, that's it, and Wood L L P. Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Need a motion to approve payment to Andrew and Price for invoice dated June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, in the amount of seven thousand seven hundred and ten dollars as submitted. So move. Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Um, the policy two forty-nine bullying, cyberbullying, is there for the first reading. So once again, keep in mind, um, this would be the time over the next time between now and the next board meeting, actually... I'm supposed to say, could we have a third reading so that it, because it's a shortened time period in between?
We've done up to three readings.
Yeah, let's do that, since there's only, because next month's meeting is earlier, um, because of the start of school and the fair...
Sure.
...schedule and everything. So it'll be there for a second reading for next, for an August, the August eighth meeting, but we will have a third reading in September, which will be kind of like where we would vote on it. So you have that period of time to, um, reach out to Dr. Oberg or Mrs. Blackheart or myself, um, with, uh, any suggestions or anything like that, okay?
So we don't discuss it this evening?
We can, but I'm just saying, before we get there, I...
We haven't even had anybody approve his, his motion yet, so give me a chance. Right, no, I get it, I just didn't know where you were going with it, I wanted to make sure. Okay.
Oh, that's right, we don't make a motion on this, because it's informal.
I, I wasn't sure, yeah, I'm sorry. No, 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 it's okay.
Um, so, but we'll have that time to discuss it. And if we want, we could ask for it to be put back on the committee agenda for further discussion, um, before we finalize. The idea would be, whatever we're bringing to the third ringing, reading would be what we would consider to pass. And I know last month, there was discussion about making the complaint form a little easier to understand. Um, and I believe we talked, that we're started on that, but just so that we know. Now, having said that, Mrs. Frye, you earlier wanted to discuss this, and I asked you to wait until this topic, since it's an agenda item, so, I don't know if anybody else has anything, but I know you did.
Yeah. So, and this is geared more towards Dr. Oberg, um, but I, one of the questions that I have is, what are... Because we, we know we see policies, but we also know that there are guidelines that, that you, um, make sure staff follows, and things like that.
Procedures.
Correct, procedures and guidelines. What are the guidelines for how a complaint is handled from a parent or guardian? I know, I know it can be case sensitive, but a general complaint, what's the life of that complaint? Where does it start, where does it end, what happens with that?
You know, I don't know if there's a, a general, um, as far as, like, how one complaint compares to another. Um, but from the impetus of there being a complaint, that really depends on who first receives it.
So let's say it's a bullying complaint, since it's a bullying complaint.
Sure, no, no, what I meant by that was, it could be brought to a teacher, it could be brought to anyone, actually, anyone on staff here to receive those complaints. Justly from there, it will rise to the level of whoever that bullying administrator is. And then they'll investigate the complaint. Uh, you know, so again, I don't like to go into minutia, but they'll be looking into, you know, the complaint, the details. Because remember, bullying is going out a lot out there. And not everything is bullying.
Right.
Uh, and that's what has to be investigated.
Right, so once it, once a staff member receives it, it gets referred to the higher level, whether it be principal...
Uh, ev- eventually, anything that was, you know, we, we talked about this a little bit, even for someone safe to say, eventually wherever that is, is happening, it's purported to have happened, the administrator in that particular building would take place, and take that, take charge of whatever that is.
Okay. Now, last month, um, with the discussion, it, it was mentioned that a complaint that's received in writing is essentially filtered through, like, starting with a Title IX, and then it determines what else it is if it isn't Title IX. Um, um, and the, the Title IX goes to the coordinator, bullying, harassment goes to the bu- building principal. However, on the form, because that, that's where a lot of the confusion is, not just for myself, but for community members and even other board members, there was a lot of confusion last month. Um, the form we have, pages one through four are for the complainant. So the person filling out the form, it is page one through four.
Okay.
Um, page one states, this serves as an informal report, not a formal complaint of sexual harassment under Title IX. Pages five through eleven are all for official use only. On page six, it gives the opportunity for the Title IX coordinator to choose informal or formal, and then it says, see additional information below on Title IX formal complaint. Then the Title IX coordinator can choose bullying, there's a few other options, or Title IX, but to keep it short. On page eight, Title IX coordinator can choose which policy applies to the report. The, the selections that are provided for the Title IX coordinator to choose are policy one zero three, which is discrimination, Title IX affecting a student, policy one zero four, which is discrimination, Title IX affecting staff, policy two forty-seven, hazing, policy two forty-nine, bullying, policy two fifty-two, dating, violence, or other. Page nine is where the Title IX coordinator can choose the recommended course of action, either no further action, or policy two forty-seven, bullying, policy two forty-nine, et cetera. Um, all, including the policies one zero three or one zero four for the Title IX, um, option. Then on page eleven is where, once the Title IX coordinator has documented all of the informal reported information, a formal complaint action can be chosen by the complainant. And it, and I quote, "I would like my report to be treated as a formal complaint pursuant to Title IX. They choose yes or no, they sign and date it." Um, we know you're, you're the, um, title coordi- Title IX coordinator. Um, if, is it, I guess the best way to ask it is, will you always be? Are you, i- is it the superintendent that is always the Title IX coordinator, or can it be delegated, or how does that work?
It can be delegated.
Okay, you just take on the responsibility here in McGuffey.
Yeah.
Okay. I mean, he faulted, everybody else wants it, right?
Well, no, 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 just, it's, it's one of those things where, uh, typically you will see that one of your top administrators take that role on.
Okay.
Um, so...
Some districts have human resource departments.
Yeah.
National Human Resource Department with the director of H R, and that person is typically part of the Title IX coordinator.
And I believe that, that there was a different person who, which she retired, and that's how it's off to you.
Yeah, I just took on some additional responsibilities.
Okay, okay. Um, how is the complaint documented when it's received verbally, um, or in writing, whether it's from a student or a parent? I know students are, are, um, encouraged to fill out the form, I know they're available in the, in the classrooms, et cetera. But if a parent were to call in, you know, what if they called their teacher and they say, hey, this is what happened, you know, somebody spit on so at gym, and I want to... You know, somebody spit on, so it jammed and I want to, you know, what do we do about this? How is that handled then by the teacher? Is it put in writing to be submitted as a complaint or how does that hit?
No, because again, you, you, what you're talking about, it's not two, it's not two different things. But oftentimes what we're talking about, again, remember not everything is bullying.
Sure.
And so typically it never even rises to that level. It's addressed either by the child, the parent making a complaint to the teacher, and then the teacher eventually making it its way to the administration so that they're made aware of it. So it, it oftentimes doesn't have to go through a very formalized process, which as, as you very well mentioned, uh, what we're using is a template that really speaks more to the heart of a Title IX complaint, sexual harassment complaint.
Sure.
And the reason why, just for everyone else's understanding here, we put other policies in there so that folks can see. Not everything, again, is, it, it could be harassment. It could be a sexual, uh, thing. It could be something else. So that's why that's there. Um, in my short time taking on this role, less than a handful, uh, those type of crews. Again, most of the time we are addressing that because a student has come forward. Sometimes it's coming up before on behalf of the student, a parent would come forward, those kind of things. That's where it's, it's really being addressed, not because of this form.
So if I may, if it's the, let's say it's the same student and it's a different kid that spit on that student. Mom calls the teacher and says, hey, now phone instead of doing it. What happens at that point?
Same thing. I mean, it's the same process i- is in play. Because again, it, it's, as you just said, again, I would suggest, if you really want to get to the heart of it, we can sit down and talk about it. You know, if this is something that you feel is beneficial to everyone here, then we'll go that route. Um, but again, it'd be the same process. All right. Let's find out, uh, who made the accusation. Let's see if there's, uh, the jury sees this accusation and how you do that. You go about and look and find out who else was involved. If that's true, you talk to them. You see, is this something that's been chronic? You talk, you know, you find out. And again, we keep records of when a situation occurs, who was the perpetrator and who was the victim. So we can go back in our own SIS and say, oh, this is the same student keeps showing up with Jimmy.
Yeah.
There's a pattern here.
Right.
You know, he can just spit on once. He spit on, he told him something on this date. He said this. So then he can start building upon himself, okay, this is rising to a different level.
Okay. That, that was where I was going with that was what's the pattern? Where, where did he at one point escalate it?
But to be clear, that the, the connection there is more than one, one conversation, like...
Right.
The legal definition of bullying, which I believe is in the policy, it is, if you would...
Mm-hmm.
Like, bullying means intentional electronic, I might come off. An intentional electronic written verbal or physical act or series of acts directed at another student or students which occurs in a school setting and or outside of school setting that is severe, persistent or pervasive and has the effect of doing any of the following. One, substantially interfering with students' education. Two, creating a threatening environment. Or three, substantially disrupting the orderly operation of the school. So that's the legal definition or the terms of this policy for bullying.
So like for your example where the parent, I think, called and said, don't spit on my son. That in and of itself is not quote unquote bullying.
Right.
But mom makes a call, next week it happens again.
Yeah.
Or, you know, the teacher sees, the following week this student do that. Now you've got that persistence.
Right.
That, that's when it would rise to the next level. So it's not just one conversation for one event.
Sure. So with that, that same example, who then, who then filled out the complaint form? If the teacher isn't providing the complaint form, what the two, the parent or guardian or whoever called in?
My understanding would be the teacher would report it to the building principal and the building principal would meet with the parent. And then that's where...
That's where the form would be filled out completely.
Where's my understanding? Is that not correct?
Potentially. Again, potentially if it rises to that level, that's where it would be filled out.
Or if they choose to.
So just...
But it's, are they advised of this form? That, that's more, a lot of this has to go back on...
Yeah, yeah.
They're not being made aware and, and that, that, I understand it's more paperwork. I get that.
No, no. And all I was gonna say, I'm sorry.
No, no, no. You're okay. Go ahead.
No, what I was gonna say was, um, that if it's been reported and it's being now investigated, from the point now investigated, that additional paperwork is not going to help the process anymore.
It does for record keeping.
No, 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 no. The records, the, listen, when, when that is brought to the, whoever it is, let's, let's say it's a student principal. Um, they're keeping records of everything that happens from a, a beha-, student behavioral standpoint. So because that's something, and all was in this situation, you know, that's something that I'm going to use and go back on and, and look to see. Okay, so you brought this to me, uh, what, what date, what is it? Okay, go back and look at those things. So I understand where you are with this, with, with the actual form itself. But quite honestly, it doesn't typically rise to that because it's being addressed. And this is something we've been talking with our students, uh, since they were in kindergarten.
Yeah.
You know, the right ways of treating one another. What happens when someone does something bad to you? How you should stick up for yourself, how as a good friend, you should stick up for your friend. Like all those things are, are, are baked into this. So that it's not often that a form needs to be brought to our attention because it's being addressed. Like that form, at that point, like in your scenario so far, in that point, it's being addressed. And so that's all I'm saying.
So here's the flip side.
Okay.
Because this, this is what, you know, we have, we have, we have community members that say there is a problem. We have community members that say there isn't a problem. We have staff to say there's a problem. We have staff that doesn't say there's a problem. That form on itself is, it solidifies whether or not this is actually a problem. Because the parent was provided it. They can't say they didn't get it. The staff member who filled it out, filled it out at the time of, of the report. I look at it, I know it's school, but I look at it on the customer, um, customer experience. You know, if I got a complaint, I have to document that complaint.
Right.
And that's, that's what I'm looking at. If it's documented, at least it's documented. And then when, when the parent comes to the school and says, you didn't do anything about this, well, here's the complaint. If you did, it's signed and dated or whatnot. Not, not even the parent signing and dating it, but...
Yep. I, 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 I understand. I, I respect, I respectfully disagree, uh, from the, this side of things where it typically comes about because a student reported something typically, right? Um, and so then it is being addressed. It is being recorded. If there is punishment for that, that also is being reported along with this. And, and that's all. I, I, I mean, I, I don't think, um, what you're saying is as far off. I'm just saying that's typically, in most cases, not how it's going to go. Because it's...
But we have a community who does not believe it is being addressed. And this is one of those ways to build that trust that, yes, we are. This is what we've done. I, I know it's case by case.
It's, it's...
Well, I mean, I think the, the other missing component to that, I think, is that it, you're talking about student confidentiality. So like, I always would say to my students, you know, if there's a discipline problem, I'm dealing with, I can't necessarily tell you what I'm doing.
Right.
Because of student confidentiality. So there's a lot of information that the community doesn't have, know, because of student confidentiality.
But I'm not even talking about other families knowing that student's business. I'm talking about mom and dad coming and saying...
I, I understand that, but even that, uh, so...
So I, I, let me ask you this question, because I, I, I feel like this is going somewhere. You're asking for the form itself to, it, because, because I heard you read the different ways in which you should respond to it and different sections to it.
Sure.
To have a form that is very specific to a bullying aspect of a student report. Not necessarily the other areas that this definitely, you know, the Title IX aspect.
Sure.
Like this is, this is, you're truly talking about a, a bullying that is persistent, uh, that has been recorded. It can be shown over time. And this is an avenue that a parent can fill that their form of communication with their district, whether the building it is, has been formally...
Right.
Shared. Like there's a formal process that I've signed off on that I know now it's going to go into this, that's just...
Yeah.
I am open to looking at that.
Okay.
I will tell you, no, I'm, I'm open to, to, if there's, if there's a feeling that that it would help, um, then I, I certainly think that we can look at having a form that is really specific to that. And then the other thing that we, 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 so yes, I am open to that. I'll just...
I appreciate it.
I am open to that. I am open to that.
So one of the other suggestions that I have is even if that very specific form isn't provided and we stick to the one that we do have, first of all, does the parent, I know they have access to the full form. Do they have to have all eleven pages? Because...
That's what I'm suggesting. I'm suggesting that I can, I would have to go back or I'm supposed to make sure there's not something. Again, we're talking about a formal complaint.
Yeah.
That everything that, that needs to be in there needs to be in there. It, it's the same eleven pages. It's going to have to be the same eleven pages.
That's right.
And maybe we can do a better job of communicating for specific complaints, these are the pages you need to go to.
Well, I was...
In, in, in that, 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 again, if we find ourselves, all eleven pages have to be there for...
It may be the same thing, but in a different way. Because I was just sitting here thinking, um, are we saying that maybe we need a, um, kind of like a separation, like a, an informal complaint form and then a formal complaint form? And the informal would be like the first step, like where they would, in, that, that may be kind of what you're saying, just in different language.
Yeah, I, I think that's...
Yes. Does the school have a disciplinary form? Like I've got two first graders and they've been picking on each other and, and, um, I take care of the problem and that's what's going in.
And then there's a lot of disciplinary form.
And, and then I, I put that down and, and then I think the problem's fixed, but next day mom's calling me saying the problem's not fixed. So I have to do something, meet with the parent. Do we have some kind of a disciplinary form that? I have one in my classroom. I, I mean, you, so I'm thinking that we probably have, probably teachers individually, we have that.
I would imagine that it's electronic.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, I mean, the, the, if your, your, if your child was, are you, just to be clear, your child has been disciplined in school?
No, yeah, that's why I'm just trying to...
No, no, no. I'm, I'm asking that, that what you're...
Oh, mine were never...
No, no, no.
Yes. Yes, I've been there. Yeah.
So, you know, back on us, to make sure we're communicating with you.
Yeah.
This is what's happening. And we're using the next one. So...
Yeah. I was just wondering if a disciplinary form would be helpful in what she's saying.
I think it would, actually.
Yeah, but, you know.
Okay.
But you're not speaking of that. You're speaking of...
No, but that's, that's additional, you know, paper trail that, that...
Sure.
Right. That's where it starts. Yes. Okay. Okay.
Yeah. But, but no, but that, that's not what you're asking.
No, no. But that is kind of added to the, the thought process.
Yeah. That, but that's not...
Right.
That's not where we are right now.
Right. Right.
You're just speaking of something very different.
Yes.
Okay. In short, it's like...
The, the problem, complaint, formal complaint, informal complaint, all of that language comes from Title IX.
Yeah.
And, and that's part of the issue is you're using a form that's to be used for everything.
Right.
So it becomes incredibly convoluted. Uh, you know, Dr. Ober and I can look at it and see maybe if we just have a different form and, because I mean, the policy is Title IX harassment, uh, and maybe we just do a, a harassment only policy, but then if somebody thinks it actually is Title IX, we, we tell them, you know, I think to be safe, the default is Title IX and then you go through. Because you can get into trouble if you don't go Title IX.
Right. So maybe like mom and dad don't necessarily know about Title IX, but you say, you received this complaint and you say, oh, this isn't just harassment. This is Title IX.
Well, and, and that's what I was gonna say to that point is, again, when, if I was to, in this case, I get that. I have to make a determination after speaking with administration who probably has already addressed this. If not, we're going to get to the bottom of it.
And the complaint.
And then I have to determine, was this sexual harassment? Was this harassment? Was this bullying? Like those are the things that we do on our end, you know, from that. So it's okay if, but I, but again, just the idea of streamlining, we can definitely look at that and see.
We can look at that. But that's what I wanted to explain. It's complex.
Yes.
Because Title IX is incredibly complex.
Yes.
And we do two-hour trainings for administration on Title IX.
Yeah.
So Title IX is not a super easy...
Right.
So it's very complex. And I wanted everyone to know it's complex because of Title IX.
Right. Right. I, I definitely recognize that. And, and again, it, even if it's the same form, as long as there's that trail, I mean, it's, the biggest thing is parents knowing about it and parents getting it. So the next part of what I'm suggesting is that we, um, I, I would motion for next month, by next month, that for our second reading, that we would have verbiage in the policy that states that parents and guardians should be pr- provide, or the complainant, the complainant should be provided to the complaint form upon the complaint received. Whether it be they called in and said, Dr. Ober, I'm having this problem. You can say, listen, here's the form. I'm going to send it to you. You don't have to fill it out. But if you think this is a, a complaint that needs to be in writing, you can send it to me. Something. Because I think it needs to be directed that the parent gets that form so that it can be filtered through the way it's supposed to be filtered through.
And then that's where, again, I respectfully disagree. It is going through the proper channels. And in fact, like, like you're trying to say is, not everything is going to be rising to that level.
Right.
So that's all I'm saying. Like, like, we are going to be creating a pa-, a massive paper trail that the majority of times, it's not going to rise to that level. And that's, and that's on your administrative team who's been working this, you know, the behavior plan and, and that. That's all I'm saying. Like, I don't want to create something that's then going to become more of a burden. It really doesn't, I think, help the situation that you're trying to say, which is helping parents to recognize that the child is being bullied and then make sure the school is recognizing that. Like, I, I respect what you're saying when it comes to trying to streamline. I definitely think you can do that. And to number two, I think we always do a better job in communicating to our moms and dads and guardians how they help their child when they see the signs, right? You know, like, you know, because there are, there are even signs that it's not the child coming home telling you. There's signs you're seeing in, in how they're, they're reacting, how they're, they're sleeping all the time, lethargic. Like those are things, and again, that was to our speaker series that we held in the past year.
Sure.
There's, there's things that we can do that this document will never do. It's just not. And all it's going to do is create more of a paper trail for your administrative team to follow up on. And they said that was never bullying in the first place. That was one incident happened in the hall. And by the way, it really wasn't what mom and dad guardian reported. That's all I'm saying. I would rather not have to go with that. I'd rather, let's communicate. Let's create a streamlined, um, copy of that. Let's talk about how you should use that and then have those, those genuine conversations that we're all having right now around what does that look like? Because it does also look differently in elementary, middle school and high school.
Right.
You know, and then, and then, and then, then let's start adding to the stone soup. Because we know, for example, we, we had a speaker series on this. We know that social media is a huge bullying, uh, uh, element out there that happens outside of our school. And it, but yet, whereas schools are expected to solve every problem that happens outside of our school. We try our best. Don't get me wrong.
Right.
But like, there's just one element of what you're talking about when it comes to the, the community feeling a certain way of what's happening in our school. And that's all I'm saying. Like there's, this is fine, but this is not going to solve that problem overnight by saying, let's put the administrators sending this out to everyone. I, I respectfully, again, disagree with that, that point. That's all.
So even if we did a separate bullying form, would that still be? Because at that point, teacher says, here's the bullying form. You fill it out. We'll handle it.
I think if it rises, Mrs. Frye, I think if it rises through the investigation, through your administrative teams in your buildings to that level, then maybe we can start talking about, okay, then at that point, clearly, then we have this form that will document it. Again, more formalized, right? Because it's already happening. You already have statements from the perpetrators and the person that was victimized. All that is happening, all, all the evidence is being brought together, but not in a formalized way until, you know, yeah, this is bullying and this is possibly rising to that next level. And that's where I'd say, then on our end, because I'm not talking about parents using this in that form. They, just like safe to say, they can use it at any time.
Yeah.
Right? Like that's...
Right.
Um, but from our perspective, that's not something I, I don't want, I might have administrative team, your principals, your assistant principals, to, every time that there is a report of it, that they have to fill this out. Like that's just, it's not going to help the situation. It's just not. From parent perspective, let's look at it. Let's, let's create a, 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 a form that is really specific to what they're addressing and, and then share it with them, communicate it with them. Have, uh, again, as we create this, of course, then we have to communicate this with our, with our teachers, our parent professionals, our admin, and then we communicate it out as a whole. Maybe you and I do a podcast. We should, no, actually I'm thinking about, uh, it's called the Ten Spot. Um, but that's a different story. For a different day. Mike knows where I'm going with this. Uh, that's no Charles. Uh, so that we then share it out and, and, uh, you know, Mrs. Frye and I, we're talking about it. This is how you can do it. This is how families can, uh, you know, navigate through it. And this is why you'd use it. This is why you wouldn't necessarily use it and those kinds of things. I'm not being flip, but actually, I'm, actually I'm very serious about that point because communication after all this is said and done is going to be very important too.
Yes. Yes. And, and I think that's the biggest, the biggest concern is a lot of complaints that I hear, there wasn't enough communication. They didn't feel like they were heard. They didn't feel like it was addressed appropriately. They have pulled their kids. We have decades of this going on. And I don't want to point fingers. I'm not trying to point fingers. I'm just trying to find the solution to the gap that seems to be happening. Like I said before, I don't know what the answer is, but we got to try to do something or we're just going to sit here kicking ourselves every time something happens. or we're just gonna sit here kicking ourselves every time something happens.
Should we show a ad remark thing?
Yeah, absolutely.
I, I think it, it's a, it's, I think it's a piece to the, to the larger puzzle. So, I'm on board with you there.
Thank you.
I think it is.
I appreciate that. Um, I think, let me see, we talked about.
And you did ask for that to be, um, for the August.
I mean, at least the start of something, yeah. Or even, even if it's just an update, like, we'll have the final reading by next month, meaning September's meeting. I know it's only a couple of weeks away, but.
All right.
Um, la- okay, last month I asked about how bias would be handled with Title IX and, and you, you, that was, we went over that. Um, how would, how would bias with a complaint that's not Title IX be handled? If a parent were to submit any kind of complaint, whether it be verbal or in writing or what have you, and they, they feel their favoritism for whatever reason, they don't feel like it's been handled appropriately, they think there was bias. How would tha- how does that get addressed? What, what goes beyond, I, I, that's part of, one of the complaints I've heard is,
I would say protocol, I mean, the, the, the protocol was always, you know, that you start with, let's face the teacher, right? If you're not satisfied there, then you go to the building principal. And if you're not satisfied there, then you go to the superintendent.
Right.
So, like, I, I think following the chain of command is how that is dealt with.
So, if they feel biased all the way up to the superintendent, then they bring it to the board?
Well.
Or does it, I mean, at what point?
You know.
I know it's very different from Title IX and I.
Well, no.
Different kind of formal procedure, but.
You're talking about the lens in which the person perceives something. And so, perception.
Essentially.
Yeah, and, and Mrs. Jordan and I, we had a nice discussion in office a couple of months back and she shared with me the, you know, the history here and those kind of things. And, and she's right, from a, from a perspective standpoint, right? From how I see things, I couldn't see things from a legacy of living in this district that way she does. It doesn't necessarily mean that she's wrong, doesn't necessarily mean I'm wrong. Bias is a tough, tough thing to try to say, I can make, waive that one and make this person feel like they, they were hurt.
Mm-hmm.
Because that's what I heard from her, is that there is those that feel on the outside, you know, the outsiders kind of thing, and I can't change that perception. Doesn't mean it's right or, or not real, doesn't mean it's not there, right? Because bias is a tough one. I, I don't have an answer for that.
I know.
Long story short, I don't have an answer for how I, I address bias because it really truly is perspective of that person. Uh, you do have this from me, uh, and from your administrative team and from your teachers. The people that work in this district care about this district.
Yes.
They care about those kids. This is the toughest time, the very toughest time. I've been in education for twenty-six years. This is the most, this is the most difficult time to be in education from whatever perspective you are part of a school district.
Yeah.
And I know we feel it here as a board.
Yeah.
And so, just know that your staff, even if there are some biases, and there probably are, are doing the best they can for those kids. And so, you, you gotta take it, that, you know, our word, that when something is investigated or, you know, that, if there's not that, that we're trying to do what's right for our kids because we want them to flourish and move on, beyond here, that's all I'm saying, again.
No, I, I appreciate that, cause I, I do recognize that that, that's a tough one and you're right, it's the lens that somebody is, is.
It is, it is.
Well, because perception is reality, right?
Correct.
So, my perception is my reality.
Right.
Your perception is your real, is your reality.
Right.
But that doesn't necessarily mean that either one of us is wrong.
Right.
It just means that, you know, when somebody tells you, don't say something personally, it still feels personal, you know?
Yeah.
So, it, it doesn't mean either side is wrong, that's just the way that works. Bias within that, be, it's also very relative. Just because I perceive something as looking like that, that could include bias, doesn't mean that it is.
Right.
That's just my perception of it.
Um, I think, uh, now, to me, it seems like we've gone completely off the bullying policy because bias is everything. It's every policy we could think of.
No, it's very specific to the policy, cause I was asking specifically about how something is handled, how a bullying concern with bias would be handled, a bullying complaint.
Well, I think, I think to, to Mrs. Suggles' point, bias is present in how we handle anything.
Correct.
When it comes to a parent has a complaint about a grade.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, you know, um, does that, so, it often involves the parent perceives that the teacher may have a bias against their kid.
Sure.
So, like, I think that's the point she was making, like, that, that element could be part of anything.
Correct.
Um, so.
But I, I, my question was just specific to that policy. I understand that there's bias with everything.
That's true.
Um, that, that was all that I have. Um, I definitely would like to see.
I have two, two things from this.
Okay.
Uh, first is that we'll have a second and third reading, so it'll give us a little bit more time on the policy. Then number two, I have Ms. Trump and I, uh, working on looking at the, the policies, the policy and procedures behind, uh, the complaint form and to see if we can streamline it to be more specific to the bullying aspects of it. And then we will attempt to, I mean, one way or the other, we'll have something back for you before, uh, August eighth. And, you know, my goal would be to have something maybe a little more concrete, so for a second reading, you can have something that will be in there.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I appreciate that.
Anything else, anyone? The budget expenditure report, um, for June is there for your reading. The cafeteria report is there for June for your reading. The P card, uh, spending summary report for June is there. Do we have a solicitor's report?
We have no solicitor's report.
Do we have a Western Area Current Technology Study Report?
We do not, because we do not have a reading in the month of July.
Do we have a Pennsylvania School Board Association Report?
I'm gonna really shorten this. The state budget, which was passed now on July eleventh, is available and P, the PSDA does have a really nice webinar. It's only like forty minutes long, it goes over every single detail, it explains to you all the decisions that were made, it addresses every single subject. The only other thing that I wanna mention is they are doing these, uh, microburst type of webinars that are shortened. The bad thing is, the chats, if you wanna be in on the chats, they are during the day on Wednesday and Thursday mornings. But you can get on the webinars, they're, they do not cost any of us anything. And you, the one is, you can earn a certificate in cyber risk oversight for public education. You can watch that, answer these questions, and, so if anybody's interested, I had asked before, do you all get the PSDA or do I just get it? When I asked that, it was because I sent something forwarding it so you all had it, but then someone said, oh, we all get it. So, I'm, I'm not gonna be redundant. It's on the website. If you want to get it, it's on there and it is available. That's the only other thing, and if you haven't, uh, been doing your, um, continuing education units, you know, the year's half over, and so we do need to be doing those. Thank you.
Time off, public, um, comment on agenda or non-event items, please?
Madam President, we have three.
Good evening. In twenty-five minutes, I'll tell you, good morning. Um, I was gonna stand up here, I'm sorry, Shannon Dorsey, Donegal Township. Um, I was gonna talk about FFA again this, this evening. I'm gonna bypass that for right now because the bullying has really gotten to me this, this evening. So, um, I want to, I really, truly believe that everybody's best interests are at heart. But, um, I had a son, I have a son that was bullied in school and there was not this form. So, I guess the, when would the form have been available? If it was available, when my son was, um, bullied or threatened at this, in, in this instance? It was threatened and then sat there and bullied. So, um, the, the long story is that my son was, um, told that someone was going to come to school with a gun and, and his life. And my son had to sit in that classroom with him the rest of the year. After I spoke with the principal, the teacher, the superintendent at the time, nothing was done. Nothing. So, I'm asking for people not to have to go through that. Because sitting there, and I did not realize, I was told that his, this was handled and that the boy that threatened my son was taken out of the classroom. He was bullied the rest of the year by this kid who he had to sit beside in the classroom. So, if there was a form back in two thousand twelve, I was not aware of that form. I, I went through the proper channels to try to get justice, something. I was told that he's only in third grade. We don't take that seriously. Um, I was told that they're handling it. And, um, apparently, they didn't. But I will tell you what my children did learn that year was that my other one, my other son was in middle school at the time, and this was maybe three weeks later, and three kids walking down the hall, joking, tripping each other, and my son got suspended from school for tripping a little girl because he was one of the three. So, when I talked to the superintendent at the time, I stated that that was what my children learned, that anybody in this school district can be bullied and threatened to end their life, but you can't trip anybody. Because my son who tripped someone got suspended for a week. And the little boy who threatened my, my youngest was in the classroom with him the remainder of the year. So, I am, bullying is very important to me. I don't want that at all. We don't want that with, with any of our kids. But I am just asking you to really think about how this is gonna turn out. If there's a form that's thirteen, fourteen, eight, five, no. There needs to be, if there was a form, my third grader wasn't filling it out at all and I wasn't aware of it. So, I don't know when that policy became standard, when the form became standard. But I wish I would've known about it back, back then. Thank you.
Uh, President, second is Trevor Maxwell.
Hello, everyone, Trevor Maxwell, Donegal Township. Um, I thank you for the five minutes of everyone putting their phones away and paying attention since I get five minutes. Um, and I'm just gonna share a little bit of social media with us this evening. Sorry, I'm going to read off the phone. It is a post that I had made, I wasn't sure if everyone is aware. I feel everyone should be aware that is in this room tonight. This is a comment I left on a post ma- made by a board member in an attempt to defend themselves by the suggestions they made to cut the business, FFA and ag programs at McGuffey High School. This is my comment. This seems as if you are trying to pedal your bike up a hill that you already started to ride down. In reviewing the board meeting at that time, you did come out and very forwardly say to cut these programs and Joe Walker. Disrespectful to say the least. These two programs are quite literally the glue to this district that have gotten multiple students further in their next step of life than anything else from this district. This is by no means a jab at any other departments, their teachers, or their credentials, however. I have yet to use Y equals mx plus b in my everyday life. I have never needed to annotate a poem written by a hundred-year-old author. I have never had to point at a map and know the capital of an oversea country. I did need to know how to write a check and balance my checkbook. I did need to know how, how the complete digestive system functions for small roomants. And I did need to know the marketability of a new product. These things are things that I needed to know. That may not fit every student that walks through the doors of McGuffey, but can you not see that in our somewhat poor community, we are very rich? Because of being able to join FFA my eighth grade year, I have gained scholarships, jobs, business and workplace connections and served at a state level advocating for agriculture education to be taught within schools. Reading Macbeth did not do that for me and neither did running the mile in gym class. Schools across the state begs, beg for agriculture education to be taught in their district and even send students to neighboring schools, which you are aware of as we have approved tonight, which costs the district money that is sending their student because of the rich knowledge that is taught and sets the students up for success, for success in agriculture education. There is a reason FFA is one of the largest student-led organizations in America covering all US states and territories. Cut the programs and cut the students' chance for success in half. The most disturbing thing about mentioning to cut these programs is that there are family members involved in these programs, serve as an officer and people who trusted you enough to elect you as a school board member. Not to mention the approximation of forty students transferring from McGuffey to another program, costing the school roughly twenty thousand dollars per student. This loan would cost about eight hundred thousand dollars per year for those forty, forty students. If our two hundred-plus member program didn't bring in over a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars per year through state funding because they are a vocational program, maybe then it would be an issue. But since it was shown to bring in more than that and, excuse me, and the budget is roughly thirty-two thousand dollars per year, how is cutting the program even a consideration? Not to mention the students that are from non-agricultural teaching schools that pay McGuffey for their students to attend. I have heard this is not going to be an issue moving forward, but it needs to be addressed. The consequences need to be spoken of and the board member needs to apologize for the insult of throwing these programs completely out of the district. Thank you.
Final in person, Vicki Jordan, Buffalo Township.
Vicki Jordan, Buffalo Township. I wasn't gonna come up until I heard legal definitions for bullying and bias and all these terms you guys wanna throw out. But when you're six, seven, eight, ten, the way you see it, if you're getting kicked under your table every day by a fellow student and you're saying something, and no, that didn't happen. In their eyes, they're being bullied. So, you can put a legal definition to it all you want. Through the eyes of these children, it's bullying. And I don't know how you fix it, but there is bias in this district and it has to be addressed at some point. Quit acting like it's not. I'm sorry, I know I, it sounds so harsh, but I'm not the only one that experienced it and I experienced it as an adult. I've had to talk to so many kids who feel the same way. They spoke up, they got told no. It didn't happen the way you said it happened. It's their perspective and it's how they're feeling and that has to at least be recognized. Thank you.
Madam President, that concludes public comment.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this point, any motions to adjourn?
Oh.
Oh. Nope. Let me.
Oh. Going back to the podium.